Madam President, if you call the lower.
Graham, here.
Here.
Here. Chagler.
Here.
Day.
Here.
Chagler.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Higgin.
Here.
Moore. Phillips. Russ. Slade.
Here. Okay, one of the first things here on the agenda is a recognition and I'm gonna call the hard Colonel Vows up to the podium to take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to call Lieutenant Terry. We have a seat up here by me, from his caretaker, Kwanzaa. We also have here from the Tennessee National Guard, Captain McMahon, Sergeant Major Shepherd, and Sergeant Anderson, would you all join us up here, please? Tonight, for the evening, we're gonna go back in history. We wanna go back seventy-four years. Well, most of us in this room were even born. On eight December nineteen forty-four, PSC Leonard Terry and his fellow soldiers of the two thirty-second Infantry Regiment, Forty-second Infantry Rainbow Division, arrived in Marseille, France, and quickly began preparing for battle. Stationed initially at Command Post Two, the men had few luxuries and endured the cold December nights in tents under blackout conditions. On December nineteenth, the division began moving forward to the front lines to relieve the Thirty-Sixth Infantry Division at Strasbourg, France. They took up new positions on the front line on December the twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve. PSC's Terry Regiment was given a sector stretching twenty-two miles along the Rhine River to defend against a veteran German paratrooper and Panther tank unit forces. This is equivalent to about one soldier for every forty feet, which is a very thin defensive force with no reserves. It was about twenty degrees in one of the worst winters for that area fifty years. Crossfire was common, and the foxholes offered no protection against the weather. On five January nineteen forty-five, French troops relieved the Forty-second Infantry Division at Strasbourg, and while PSC Terry's regiment was relocating, the German Army was getting attacked on at seven zero seven forty-five hours. Near the town of Amershein, enemy tanks and infantry were ferried across the Rhine River, and despite individual courage, the odds were too great for the Americans. Germans surrounded the town, and the majority of its defenders were captured or left to death. PSC Terry was one of those left behind. He was suffering from extreme exposure to the cold weather, but after treatment by a medical unit, he was able to return to duty with his regiment. In April nineteen forty-five, PSC Terry's regiment played a significant role as the Allied forces drove deep into the heartland of Nazi Germany. Most noteworthy was their role in defeating the Nazis in the cities of Wurzburg and Swainford. On Victory in Europe Day, eighth May nineteen forty-five, PSC Terry's regiment was in Austria attending to the mass surrender of thousands of German prisoners fleeing from the Soviet offensive in the east. By the end of January nineteen forty-seven, the men of the two thirty-second Infantry Regiment went home to the USA, and the unit was deactivated. On sixth March nineteen forty-seven, PSC Leonard Terry received an honorable discharge of the United States Army at Fort Dix, Detroit. On behalf of your country, I'd like to sincerely thank you, Leonard, for your service.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to have members of the Tennessee National Guard present you with the Bronze Star Medal. Everybody, please stand.
Mr. Terry, we have two things that we would like to present you with this evening. First of all, your combat service was with the Forty-second Infantry Division. Sergeant Major Shepherd and I will share that service in two thousand and five. We served with the Forty-second Infantry Division, not right now.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We are only following the example that you've set, and I want you to know that change of service will be unbroken, and we will do everything we can do to uphold the example that you've set for us.
Okay.
I want you to have this combat service identification badge, which we wear to carry with you.
Okay, tell them.
Absolutely. Thank you. The second thing that we would like for you to have is this Bronze Star. Sergeant Major, publish your name.
Attention, orders. PSC Leonard Terry earned a Combat Infantry Badge and Good Conduct Medal for his service in action taken while engaging active ground combat against an armed enemy in the European Theater of Operations during the Central European and Northern Campaigns from nine December nineteen forty-four to eleven May nineteen forty-five, including. In accordance with Army Regulation six eighty-two-two-two and provisions of the Executive Order one-one-zero-four-six, by virtue of the Art Authority of the President of the United States, it is ordered that PSC Terry be awarded the Bronze Star Medal for distinguishing himself by heroic service and achievement while engaged in action against enemy of the United States. Mr. Terry's service contributions in dedication to duty are in keeping this station's founding tradition, reflect great credit upon himself, the Forty-second Infantry Division, United States Army, and the state of Tennessee.
Mr. Terry, the Bronze Star.
Thank you for our attention.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for the service.
God bless you. Mr. Terry, would you like to say anything?
Sir?
Would you like to say anything?
Yes, I would, if I had nothing to say against that. Now, I'm not designed to say for a while, so I can't tell who's here and who ain't. Some know me, some don't. And I thank every one of you that come out, see this door. I didn't know nothing about it. It's all, I mean, it surprises me, so I think it's all coming out. Now, I was in the service, and the good Lord for this is, black me out, I know seven things in the whole war. So that's about all I've got to say, but I thank every one of you, and God bless you. Are you?
Yes.
That's good. They're good out there. If you owe them, give them an order, they'll pay.
I know, I'm tired of jumping again here, I don't wanna get jammed while we can.
Official term is over, sir.
I was gonna get here.
You just stand still, sir, we'll come around.
Let us get some, let us get some.
We've got more pictures.
One more.
These old legs, they been around too long. They don't stand up too good.
Congratulations on a long life.
Thank you.
I'm congratulating you on a long life.
Oh, Lord.
I want to recognize Kwanzaa, who is his caregiver, so she had a whole lot to do, stuff that had to be done in order to provide you with the Bronze Star Medal, so I want to thank you too.
Yeah, when I get back home, I'm gonna go to Hoover. Oh, there's no media watching. I'm sad and joyous. Never made the strike. What kind of mate? Oh. This here, everybody. Hey, there. I ain't gonna play. You won't make the rap to me, then? You might as well be a man. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a resolution honoring Patricia A. Pat Phillips. We call, we're gonna meet members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate the opportunity. Ms. Pat, I know that you're accustomed to sitting and being in the background, would you please step forward for this recognition tonight? If there's any members of her family here that would like to join her, would you join her at this time? Any and all?
Everybody wants to.
I didn't mean for you to, I was swatting. I think it's family practice, I'd like mine. As they're coming forward, let me say that Mr. Terry's gonna be a hard-hitting father. There's no doubt about that. Certainly appreciate his service. Let me say that in my eight-and-a-half years of being on the American Legion plate of body, this is probably one of the most gratifying tributes I've been a part of, and it's a pleasure to be part of your recognition. Pat and I have known each other for more than thirty years. I was a young reporter, she was a younger deputy county clerk, and she was working for Mrs. Vestie Phillips, and I guess some of us all remember Vestie. She was a very strong and independent woman who believed in the integrity of the office, the integrity of the public record, and, most importantly, customer service. And those are three traits that Pat embraced as a young deputy clerk and made that part of her everyday life. In nineteen ninety-eight, Vestie retired, Pat had the opportunity to run for the office. She was rewarded for her years of dedicated public service to donors, letting the letter just once, not twice, not three times, but five times, to the office of county clerk. So we are certainly proud of this Pat. On behalf of my colleague, Mr. Bailey, who is a little under the weather tonight, I hate that of you, but I am pleased to be part of this and being, having the opportunity to read this resolution that has been written by Mr. Bailey and the honor of Ms. Pat. Resolution to recognize and honor the service of Patricia A. Pat Handy Phillips as Scott County Clerk, nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand and eighteen. Whereas Patricia A. Pat Handy Phillips was born August thirtieth, nineteen sixty-two, to marry a teen, Tim and Loretta Handy in Alana, Tennessee, and whereas Pat grew up with her sister, Dicky Handy Goat, and her brother, Tim Handy, in the West Robbins Community of Scott County. And whereas Pat received her education at Robbins Elementary and Scott High School, graduating in nineteen ninety as valedictorian of her senior class, and whereas while at Scott High, Pat not only excelled in academics, but also in basketball, being selected by the senior class as most athletic. And whereas soon after graduating from high school, Pat began serving as deputy clerk in the Scott County Clerk's office until her election as Scott County Clerk in nineteen ninety-eight. And whereas Pat has served in the office of Scott County Clerk for thirty-seven years. And whereas in December of nineteen eighty-six, Pat married Bradley F. Phillips, and they had one daughter, Whitney, who is married to Keith McKinnon, and is the mother of Tucker Leibai McKinnon. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, Pat traveled with their father, Tim, and his brothers, Alumnus, Ulyss, and Bill Handy, the Handy Brothers Quartet, as pianists for the group. Together, they traveled all over Tennessee, Kentucky, Ohio, Indiana, Georgia, North Carolina, and South Carolina, singing gospel music. And whereas Pat is a member of the Cathedral Hill Missionary Baptist Church, where she serves as pianist. And whereas through her many devoted years of service to the county, her community, church, and family, Pat has consistently demonstrated her Christian values of hard work, respect, compassion, and love for others. And whereas Pat has chosen to retire, not seeking up a term of office so that she can devote more time and attention to her beloved family, especially with her grandson, Tucker, and her nieces and nephews. And whereas it is altogether fitting and proper that her service to Scott County and its citizens be recognized and honored. They are therefore be it resolved that the Scott County Board and County Commissioners and the Scott County Mayor hereby adopts this resolution recognizing and honoring the distinguished service of Patricia A. Pat Phillips as Scott County Clerk of Scott County, Tennessee, from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and eighteen, as well as recognizing her service to her community, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed, that the permanent records of Scott County and a certifying copy be presented to Pat and her family. And I make that motion.
I'll say it. Voting on voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Terry.
Now, Ms. Pat, I know that you normally don't like to speak, and this is out of your comfort zone, but with that lovely grandchild and howling that child, would you like to share your thoughts of your year of service to Scott County?
I know that I'll cry, but it's truly enjoying, because it's been years to be able to be a part of Scott County and end up with people, you know, and share so many things with them. And I'm so thankful that God has blessed me with a family that I have, that always backed me and been supportive, and especially Brad, he's been up in me for a long time, and with me, I appreciate my daughter. I appreciate this commission, and Mayor John, Kendra, and I have my step, Rosella Andrew, daughter, daughter's been with me twenty-five years, and the people I've worked with, several different mayors, you see Dick Dinsy back there, and Ron, good friend of Lee. I don't wanna start my mind, or I'll forget, but I love everybody, and it's truly been a joy. A good friend of mine told me that I talk about having a purpose in life, and I know what my purpose was, and that was to serve people and to be a light to people, and God has blessed me with that, and I'm like... I would like to say too, that I'm thankful to have my mother with me, she's still here, and I do thank God for that.
Good job, Pat.
Hey, Pat, my only question, when Bailey, you've got nearly four decades of service into the county, how do you do that? You're only twenty-nine, right?
I started when I was four.
Somebody had a light going just a little bit.
I would like to remind everybody that they are gonna have a dinner for her, a meeting with maybe, so everybody hang around that's interested in celebrating with her and having meals for her. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Jerry Effler, District Attorney General.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ward Commissioner, I'm Jerry Effler, and I have the privilege of serving as District Attorney General. I'm here to my task for your assistance in standing a dedicated domestic violence victim witness coordinator, so these stationed here at our Family Justice Center. The opening of the Family Justice Center has been a tremendous success thus far, almost the one where we have become a victim of that success. We have served scores of domestic violence victims, and this has put a tremendous strain upon our domestic violence prosecutor, to the point where she is performing functions that would typically be delegated to a victim advocate. In seeing the need for a dedicated domestic violence victim witness coordinator, my office applied for a grant to secure funding for this position for the Office of Criminal Justice Program. We have been awarded that grant, subject to that position being a county-funded position for Scott County. What that means is, is that Scott County would serve as a pass-through for this position. All funding would be provided by the Office of Criminal Justice Programs. I have spoke with Department of Finance here in Scott County, and they are not opposed to administering this grant. The good news for Scott County is, is that it would require zero cost other than those incidents to the administration of this grant. It would require, I believe, approximately eleven thousand dollar grant, that would be an income, excuse me, match, that would be an income match that would be provided for my office to be in supervision. So it's my desire tonight, if you would authorize the pass-through of this revenue to fund a dedicated domestic violence victim witness coordinator, and I think that's just what I'm asking for. Mr. Mayor, I'll be glad to hear if you have any questions at this time.
Anyone have any questions? General, you said this was in your position?
Yes, I think that actually, Mr. Mayor, I felt that this, the initial grant is for a period of two years. Of course, we want it to be turned into something permanent, hopefully, but the grant as proposed is a two-year grant.
Besides the two years, do you reapply, or?
That remains to be seen at this point. Ideally, hopefully, we can show the success of this program. Ideally, it would be converted at some point in the future to a state-funded position. We don't know, but that's our pie that the sky brings us.
Is that, I think you're available for Scott County. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Warren.
I said at that time, that state-led position, that you would pay for that at that point, that the county?
Well, we don't know. I mean, I'm simply speculating at what will happen at the end of two years. If I had my desire, this would at some time in the future convert to a state-funded position. We're simply not very equipped, Mr. Warren. Yes, Mr. Slade, how are you?
Good, good, how you doing? Would the position be local, local?
Yes.
Is that determination you have?
Well, hopefully, things go as I expect them to tonight. I don't wanna be presumptuous, but I'm interviewing a young lady when I finish speaking to she at Scott County Recess.
Any more questions, Mr. Effler?
I'm making motion, go ahead.
Okay. Voting on voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Terry. Okay, next thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from July the sixteenth, twenty eighteen. You have them in your book. Any discussion?
Make motion for three minutes.
Motion, blue day.
Second.
Robert. Okay, voting on voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Terry. Hey, we laid the minutes from July twenty-third, which was a special call meeting, on the list, everyone should have a copy of those, and we do need approval of those for the twenty-third day of July, twenty eighteen.
I'll make a motion. Can you change that, Will?
Right. Effler. Okay. Voting on voice vote? To approve, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Terry. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the nomination of the nobreys and bond approvals. Okay, first on the nobre, Amy Martin. Next on the nobre, Pamela Bradley. Next is Tiffany Strunk. Then next is Ivy Jones. Okay, and purity bonds, State Farm Bar and Cassidy Company, S.R.C. Eternity, the first, blue day.
Second.
State public, free. Voting on voice vote? Well, hopefully, things go as I expected them to tonight. I don't want to be presumptuous, but I'm interviewing a young lady when I finish speaking. And she is a Scott County resident.
Any more questions, Mr. Effer?
I'll make the motion to move ahead.
Good. Voting on, roll call vote.
Graham, aye.
Clark, aye.
Patrion, aye.
Chadwell, aye.
Scotty, aye.
Jeffrey, aye.
Paul, aye.
Good, aye.
Slaven, aye.
Strunk.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Ward Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, next thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from July the 16th, 2018. You have them in your book. Any discussion?
Make a motion for three minutes.
Motion, blue day.
Second.
Robert. Okay, voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry. Okay, we laid the minutes from July 23rd, which was a special call meeting. On the list, everyone should have a copy of those. And we do need approval of those for the 23rd day of July, 2018.
I'll make the motion. Can you change that, Will?
Carry.
Correct, Burke. Voting on, notice vote to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the nomination of the nobodies and bond approvals. Okay. First on the nobree, Amy Martin. Next on the nobree, Pamela Bradley. Next is Tiffany Strunk. Then next is Ivy Jones. Okay. And the purity bonds, State Farm Bar and Cabs Company, S R C. I entertain and welcome, blue day.
Second.
State public, free. Voting on, voice vote to approve the nomination of the nobodies and bond approvals. This year. Okay, moving on. Okay, voting on, voice vote to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry. Okay, the next on the agenda is the financial reports, monthly and annually. I do think monthly, you didn't have it really last month, so we do have to give you a look at the data. So, entertaining for a motion approved or any discussion? I think we're going to do.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second, voting on, voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry. Okay, next we have school matters. Anyone here from Scott High or Oakdale School, either one? Okay. Moving on, we have a sheriff's report. Does anyone have anything to say? No? And moving on to road matters. My old bigs back there.
I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm on thank the quarter, I'm there, gone. Really happy to have you guys on this issue, but I believe I can live with y'all and I'm very thankful Scott County for what it's been. But I really enjoyed it. I wish for one coming in and there's a lack of y'all, uh, stay with us, let's make Scott County better, please. We want to thank the mayor and I hope I will be back. Thank y'all.
Good job, thank you. Okay, next we have the general public. If there's anyone from the general public that would like to speak. So next we're moving on to the... Okay, I'm sorry, Chris, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
That's okay, that's okay. First of all, thank you. As I talked with some of the finance committee not long ago, OCJP, they had not only the position with the District Attorney's Office, but they also contacted me and asked for more money left over. So we had the opportunity to request some funds for an equipment program. So the equipment we would be looking for through this funding source would be surveillance equipment for the actual Family Justice Center. So it would give us the ability to see the outside when we're on the inside. As well as some video conferencing equipment that would allow us to be at the Family Justice Center with the victim and perpetrator being in the actual courtroom. We're looking at approximately $11,000, give or take, on the assessment. It is an 80/20 grant, so we have to come up with 20% match. So that would be $2,750, added even $11,000. With that, we have a organization that's willing to install the security system free of charge. So that would take care of that match that is required. So I would just like to ask this body to correct myself permission to go ahead and act on that grant before the 12th of February, as our other branch for the Family Justice Center does.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Slaven, Jim. Voting on, voice vote to approve this matter, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry.
Thank you, I did want to just share with you all real quickly. We get opened not even two months ago. We've had over 40 visitors seeking services through the shelter, or through the Family Justice Center, which included five just today. So I want to thank you all for your support that has allowed us to be a conduit to help victims have hope. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, you're doing a good, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda... Does anyone else from the audience have anything they'd like to bring up or something? Well, good, okay. Thank you. Moving on, committee reports and resolutions. First on the agenda is Parks and Recreation Committee, Chairman Chadwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Park and Rec's committee was called to order August 6, 2018. Members present, June Chalamo, Sheila Blutrim, June Jeffers, Diana Smith. Members absent, Rick Russ, St. Reagan, Chair Martin. Also present, Jimmy Reynolds, Finance Director, and Mayor Dale Perdue. Motion by Diana Smith and a second by Sheila Blutrim. To allow Eric Henry, Scott Kenny, Scott Kenny Schools, to be replacing two pitches by the soccer field with two new pitches at no cost to the Scott Kenny government. Voting on, all present. Motion by Sheila Blutrim and a second by June Jeffers to adjourn the meeting. Voting on, all present. I'll make the motion to go through.
Second. Motion, second. Okay, voting on, voice vote, fifth minute's record, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry.
And unless there's any questions, Mr. Chairman, it's all right.
Thank you. So moving on to the emergency service committee. Okay. Mike Slaven was acting chairman on that.
Emergency Service Committee, August 6, 2018. Members present, Blue Day, Rick Burton, Keith Chadwell, Sam Lyles, Rob McRum, members absent, Terrence Phillips and Patty Brown. Committee was called to order at 6:02 PM by Mike Slaven, acting chairman. Motion by Blue Day, second by Sam Lyles, to recommend a road length to the McCarty Cemetery in the Windridge community to be named the McCarty Cemetery Road. Voting yes from David, Blue Day, Keith Chadwell, Sam Lyles, Rob McRum, and Rick Burton. Voting no, none. Motion by Blue Day, second by Sam Lyles, to adjourn the meeting. Voting out, all present.
Motion to approve. Aye. Okay, voting on, voice vote to approve the minutes, all votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry.
The resolution that follows, whereas a request has been made to name the road to Windridge community in the second edition. The road begins at Goose Creek Run Road and ends at the Borghardt County line. The road serves as an access to the McCarty Cemetery. Whereas the road would be named for 911 purposes only and would not be brought to the county road system. Whereas the name proposed for the road is the McCarty Cemetery Road, which has been recommended to the full commission by a landlord and a member of the McCarty family. Now therefore, it is resolved, Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby approves the recommendation to name the subject road the McCarty Cemetery Road for 911 purposes only.
Motion to approve the resolution, ayes. Okay, voting on, voice vote to approve the resolution, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry. Scott. Moving on, Buildings and Grounds Committee, and Mike, you were also the acting chairman on that also.
Building and Grounds Committee, August 6, 2018. Members present, Rick Burton, Sam Lyles, Rob McRum, Sheila Blutrim, members absent, Rob Lemon and Rick Russ. Committee was called over at 6:23 PM by Mike Slaven, acting chairman. Jessica Anderson, Program Supervisor for Prevent Child Abuse Tennessee, requesting to share the office space with Casa, 2845 Baker Highway in Huntsville, Tennessee. District discussion will be at the August 20th, 2018, minutes two. Motion by Rob McRum, second by Sam Lyles, to adjourn the meeting. Voting out, all present.
Motion to approve. Second. Okay, voting on, voice vote to approve the minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry.
Yeah, I think John passed out a letter in support of this office space. So there is a office resolution here. Whereas the Scott County Board of County Commissioners is charged with assigning office spaces in county buildings under state law. Whereas in February 2017, office space in Scott County Office Building was assigned to Casa on their request. Whereas a request has been made by Jessica Anderson to allow Prevent Child Abuse Tennessee to occupy and use an office within the Casa complex or the offices. Whereas Casa has agreed to accommodate the request, subject to approval by the county. Whereas the Building and Grounds Committee has forwarded requests to the full commission. Now therefore, it is resolved, Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby approve of the request to allow Prevent Child Abuse Tennessee to occupy, use office, and use office in the Casa complex or the offices in Scott County Office Building.
Make a motion to approve the resolution, Chadwell.
I'll second.
Okay, voting on, voice vote to approve the resolution, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry.
I would like to include this letter part of the record also. I'm happy to read it. You don't want to do it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the Community Development Committee.
Community Development Committee, August 6, 2018. Members present, Sheila Blutrim, Paul Strawn, Mike Slaven, June Jeffers, members absent, Eric Lee, Fort, Rick Russ, and Rob Lemon. Committee was called to order at 6:23, 6:26 PM by Mike Slaven, acting chairman. Motion by June Jeffers, second by Sheila Blutrim, to recommend to the commission to approve the Elgin Community Center request for a road block on Saturday, October 6, 2018. Road block, road block to be at Highway 52 and the intersection of Highway 27. Voting out, all present. Motion by Paul Strawn, second by Sheila Blutrim, to recommend to the commission to approve the 7th District Volunteer Fire Department request for a road block on Saturday, September 1st, 2018. Road block will be at 1,000 block on Gray Hill Road. Voting out, all present. Motion by Paul Strawn, second by Sheila Blutrim, to adjourn the meeting. Voting out, all present.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Voting on, voice vote to approve the road block, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry. That is for both road block issues.
Two best ones here. Whereas there's been a road block request from the Elgin Community Center to hold a road block on Saturday, October 6, 2018. Whereas the Elgin Community Center has requested a road block at the following location and time. Highway 27, the Elgin intersection, Highway 52, but the Elgin intersection, Highway 27. Road block hours from 9:00 AM to 3:00 noon. Now therefore, it is resolved, Scott County Board of County Commissioners authorize this road block location.
Motion to approve the resolution. Voting on, voice vote to approve the resolution to the road block, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry.
Whereas there's been a request from the 7th District Volunteer Fire Department to hold a road block. Whereas this organization has requested road block for the following location and time. Gray Hill Road has a 1,000 block parking on shoulder areas not to disturb traffic as well on Saturday, September 1st, 2018, 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Now therefore, it is resolved, Scott County Board of County Commissioners authorize this road block location.
Okay, voting on, voice vote to approve this road block in 7th District, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry. We do have a resolution that, all of it brought from Windfield. Am I bringing that up in the right place?
It is all the road issue, Mr. Chairman. And if the pleasure of Community Development Committee would like to introduce it this time, if that's okay. Go, Jack. Um, I have my colleague from the Fifth, Mr. McRum. We would like to introduce this resolution, which actually is just a non-binding support resolution supporting and amped by the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the Town of Windfield, requesting the Tennessee Department of Transportation install a continuous left turn, turn lane in section of Highway US 27, State Route 29 in the Windfield area. If I may, I'll read it to you. Whereas the Town of Windfield has seen business growth and development in recent months, including the opening of a discount retail store. And whereas JDS Technologies Incorporated recently began manufacturing goods at the former ABC Building in Southern Municipality. And whereas the primary business district inside of the town is located along State Route 29, which is a non-divided two-lane highway with a posted speed limit of 55 miles per hour. And whereas this retail and industrial growth has led to an increase in traffic and traffic congestion in the area. And whereas increased congestion combined with highway speeds exponentially increase the occurrences of traffic collisions, which can result in the loss of life and property. And whereas at least two deaths have been recorded on this stretch of highway in the last three years. And whereas the Town of Windfield Mayor and Board of Alderman have requested the Tennessee Department of Transportation, TDOT, install a continuous two-way left turn lane from south of the Dollar General Store located at 23991 Scott Highway to north of the Town of Windfield Municipal Building located at 24961 Scott Highway in Windfield. And whereas the Town of Windfield has asked that State Route 29 be included in TDOT's long-range plans for improvements, including but not limited to the installation of a continuous two-way left turn lane between the southernmost and northernmost terminuses of its municipal boundaries. And whereas Scott County recognizes that the requested highway improvements imperative to the safety, health, and welfare of its citizens. Now therefore, it will be resolved, the members of the Scott County Board of County Commissioners and County Mayor Dale Perdue, who hereby affirm their support of the Town of Windfield's request to the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the installation of a continuous two-way left turn lane on Scott, State Route 29 inside the Town of Windfield Municipal Boundaries. And furthermore, a copy of this support resolution is sent to State Senator Ken Jaeger and State Representative Kelly T. Keesling. And I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, voting on, voice vote to approve, seeing this down and see if we can get the turn off lane. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Intergovernmental Committee, Chairman Chadwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Intergovernmental Committee was called to order at 6:28 PM by Keith Chadwell, the chairman. Members present, Keith Chadwell, David Blue Day, June Jeffers, Mike Slaven, Paul Strawn, members absent, Terrence Phillips, Patty Brown. There's no action taken. Uh, motion by Blue Day, second by Paul Strawn, to adjourn the meeting. Voting out, all present. I'll make that motion.
Voting on, voice vote to approve the minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry. Okay. Moving on to the Magic Committee, Chairman Slaven.
Committee, August 6, 2018. Members present, Mike Slaven, Paul Strawn, Rob McRum, Sam Lyles, members absent, Patty Brown. Committee was called to order at 6:29 PM by Mike Slaven, acting chairman. No action taken. Motion by Paul Strawn, second by Sam Lyles, to adjourn the meeting. Voting out, all present.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, voting on, voice vote to approve the minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, carry.
So I have, while I'm budgeting, I have a couple of things that I think we probably should address, that the commission should address. We've got some issues at the jail, DHS, the courthouse that we're getting on budget for. I think we have the money to do that, because in our fund balance. We have some air conditioning units that are not in the best of shape at the jail and over at the courthouse. We've got some software updates for the jail that lock and unlock the doors. I think they should be updated so they don't have to manually go unlock every door. DHS building, we're responsible for that. I think they're...
I think their carpet is formed and ripped up, it's going to have to be replaced. The lawnmower went out at the, at the jail. So, there's several things that we need to address, probably somewhere around fifty or sixty thousand dollars in that ballpark, but we have the money in the fund balance, and we're not asking, all these, most of these have to be bid, so we're not asking for money tonight to do that, just that when those do come up and all the needs are met, then we'll take that money out of the fund.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Okay, voting on road call vote to approve when this comes out, to be able to take it out of the fund bank.
Well, uh, about, uh, travel, uh, day, chairs, uh, laws, uh, we bring, uh, sign, uh, sure.
Uh, and it's only if they, air conditioning units may last two or three years, they know, but I, I have no idea. I just think I always put, put the money in the budget for, and if they go out, they're going to have to be paid. So, another one is, um, when the budget's approved and coming back, we'll have some comp time issues that we didn't plan for in the budget either. So, some personnel changes or whatever happens, and we have to pay out comp time for these individuals, uh, will need to be able to amend the budget, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So, I don't know if that's part of the motion, that's just information, because it's going to affect whoever, whatever office holder that happens to, it will affect our budget, and it's really not there, not there at all, so, you know, we've got the D U, we've got pass, and we've got the mayor, all those changing hands, and I'm not sure what's happening, but there's comp time, uh, has to be paid, and that'll need to be a legitimate amendment done at that time.
And once we get another together, we can come back and bring it to Budget Committee.
Anybody have any questions on that? I think that's all I have. Anybody have any questions on the budget?
Still have not had an answer from the state.
So, the next four, four minutes.
Yeah, I'm expecting it to come through every day, because I'm going to hopefully have Ms. Phillips sign up on it and upload it.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, moving on to the Finance Committee, Chairman Slaven.
Finance Committee August thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Members present, Mike Slaven, June Jeffers, Bill Hawke, Penny Chavell, Dick Sexton, Del Perdue, members absent, Ernest Phillips. Also present, Virginia Reynolds, Paul Strunk, John Bady, and Christie Harnes. Committee was called to order five PM by Mike Slaven, chairman. Motion by Bill Hawke, taken by June Jeffers to approve the expenditures for travel expenses for John Bady and Paul Strunk from Jackson, Mississippi, to represent Scott County government in the Southern District of Mississippi relating to the bankruptcy cases of Pioneer Health Systems Incorporated and its affiliates, voting aye all present. Motion by Dick Sexton, taken by Del Perdue, to adjourn the meeting, voting aye all present.
Entertained for a motion.
Motion approved.
Blue and June Jeffers. Okay, voting on voice vote. Voting on voice vote, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carry.
I wanted to report to the commission that it, that's not going to be necessary. Actually, I got a text just a couple of minutes ago, I wanted to confirm that, but it will not be necessary for Mr. Strunk and myself to be in Jackson this Friday, so, thank goodness. But, uh, I would, I would say that, uh, this has been a struggle to defend the county against what I would consider a frivolous lawsuit, and we're still trying to work our way through that, so, I appreciate Mr. Strunk being willing to do that if necessary, but thankfully it won't be this Friday.
Okay, do we have any other matters that need to come before this court?
We actually need to approve the bonds, uh, for the resolution for that purpose.
Do you need to read that?
I can read it. Uh, this is required every four years. I did check with, uh, Ms. Phillips, apparently the director of schools bond also needs to be approved with this, uh, for this resolution, so I'll go ahead and read that. Whereas it is necessary for Scott County Board of County Commissioners to approve the bonds of county officials, and whereas on August second, two thousand eighteen, the offices of trustee, road superintendent, county clerk, county mayor, central court clerk, sheriff, and registered lead of Scott County were elected, and whereas the bond of the director of schools of Scott County also needs to be approved at this time. Now therefore, be resolved by Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby approving the bonds for the offices of trustee, road superintendent, county clerk, county mayor, central court clerk, sheriff, registered lead, and director of schools of Scott County, and further that the Scott County mayor and Scott County clerk be authorized to execute and follow the bonds in the appropriate office.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
We don't have the bonds at this time, but we need to go ahead and approve them now when they come in, uh, because there is a time factor in this, so.
Okay, voting on voice vote to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Okay, moving on, is there any announcements? Would anyone like to make any announcements coming forward? Okay.
Oh, wait, Mr. Chairman, I've got.
You've got another issue? Let me back there.
We have a driver's license limit, I think I provided that to you as well. Uh, it's not, it doesn't change the, uh, you know, what, what we have in place, it's just a minimum that we have to do every so often, so, if we can get that approved as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion, place on, any change in the office holder?
Aye.
Moving. Okay, voting on voice vote to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Okay, then moving on, I asked for announcements, I don't think anyone had anything you wanted to announce.
I was about to say, uh, there's an announcement, but just appreciate that, and all the hard work you've done over the years, a lot of time spent in this county, certainly three fifty years, one of the downwind, county destination, county mayor, the past, just all around, good person, appreciate you, and Ray, and I've been here a long time together, I appreciate him, and everybody else too.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to recognize Ms. McBurney for her service to the citizens of the fifth district, and take care of her in service the last four years, as well as Mr. Burke and those that are tuning to not run for reelection this year, thank you all.
Okay, and then also John Bady, would you like to say something?
Mayor, I want to thank you for your service for the county, it's been a pleasure to work with you, to have been to work with, uh, Jeffers, uh, Ver, uh, Mr. Burn, and the other commissioners that are leading. Uh, I also want to thank Ms. Phillips for several years of, of robbery. Uh, I think I've learned more from Ms. Phillips about my job than any attorney or judge could have taught me, so I want to thank someone, it's been, it's been a pleasure and honor to work with you, uh, and I will miss you, uh, but, uh, this is our friendship, my fault.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you need anyone else? Okay, entertained for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Dave.
Dave.
Brown.